All right, ready? All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Today is the August 18th Somerville Board of Education meeting and welcome to everyone. We're doing this virtual because of the current pandemic and I would like to now ask everybody to please rise for the salute to the flag. I know that Mr. Boyce has a flag, for those of you who can see him, and so does Mr. Hello. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Adequate notice of this meeting in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, entitled "The Open Public Meetings Act" has been provided by action of the Board of Education at its regular meeting on December 10th, 2019. Notices of interior news and star ledgers circulate in the school district and a posted notice to this effect on the Board of Education website and building bulletin board, administrative headquarters, 51 West Cliff Street, Somerville, New Jersey. Mr. Boyce, do we have a roll call, please? Hold on one second. Technical difficulties.
Okay, Ms. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Here.
Mrs. Olson.
Here.
Mr. Pontillo.
Here.
Dr. Saden.
Doctor here.
I mean, yes, here.
Okay, Mr. Kimmich.
Here.
Mrs. Van Horn.
Here.
Mr. Sardiel.
Present.
Mr. Jess.
Here.
Mrs. Fabrizi.
Here.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we are going to have, take public comments for items that are related to the agenda only. Thank you to those who have submitted your comments. I do have them and for ones that were recently submitted, I will be going back and forth, so please bear with me as I get to the individual comments for the meeting. The first one comes from Kelly Price from the Santa Station. The Board of Education meeting minutes have always been posted after the meeting. Why were the meeting minutes for both June and July not posted? Comment also, the July meeting was apparently when the decision to cut the gymnastics program was made. When will the minutes from the July meeting be visible? It is difficult to question decision when there is nothing on public record discussing it. Lack of transparency makes the decision appear questionable. Second, hold on, that one. The next item regarding agenda items was submitted by Joe DeLisandro, Flemington, New Jersey, relative to personnel item number 39. Good evening all, hope you are staying well and safe during this time. I was recently told by the administration that I've been reassigned to a middle school, physical education, and health position in the district. Respectfully, I feel it was wrong and unprofessional to reassign me to the middle school after 30 years as an educator in the high school. I feel my strength as a teacher is best utilized teaching in my areas of expertise, which include the driver's education and CPR first aid courses, which require specialized certifications. I also feel I am very capable of successfully teaching any virtual physical education or option two requirements needed in the program. In my career, I have specialized in teaching driver's education and CPR first aid. Driver's education in 2005, Somerville High School. Both of these courses will be the main focus for a semester of virtual learning at Somerville High School. For these reasons, I feel I would be best utilized teaching the course I have, teaching the courses I have valuable experience with and help develop, opposed to a new curriculum as well as age group that I've never taught. I feel in my 35 years of teaching and coaching, I have a proven record of success and I've been a positive influence on thousands of students' lives. I would like to continue in that capacity at Somerville High School. I've always given my best to the school, administration, community, and most importantly, the students of Somerville High School. Although I will always be professional and do the best job I can, do in whatever form, I do feel this really assigning decision should be reevaluated given the circumstances. I've given my heart and soul to Somerville High School for 30-plus years. I love the school and the community and I would like to continue to serve in the same vital fashion for the rest of my career. Thank you, Joe DeLisandro, physical education and health educator at Somerville High School. The next one regarding agenda items is from Jamie Craska, Somerville. After reading the agenda, I saw under finance number 19, the board is looking to approve a donation from the Music Booster Club to help fund Bandcamp. This is great. The Gymnastics Booster Club would like the same opportunity to help fund the gymnastics team that was cut at the last board meeting and we would love to have an open dialogue with the athletics committee regarding that item. Bear with me for a minute. Okay. Those are the only three items that I have found relative to agenda items and everybody I can apologize, I'm not usually the one that does this, so if you see me going back and forth and reading and looking a little disheveled, I apologize. So there being no other items regarding the agenda, may I have a motion to close this session, please? Thank you, Dr. Saden, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Olson. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Second.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any extensions? So move. I will attempt to answer the first question that was posed by Ms. Price regarding the Board of Education meeting. The reason that you did not see the minutes posted on the website is because they have not been board approved yet. Both the June and July meeting minutes are on tonight's agenda for approval. The board does not, the board does not publish any minutes until they are formally approved, but after tonight's approval, they will be published. With regard to Mr. DeLisandro's question or comment, I'm going to leave that up to the superintendent to comment on that if he sees fit. And with regards to Ms. Craska's question, I believe that the athletic committee would be open to a dialogue with you regarding your suggestion. I would ask you to please reach out to Mr. Sardiel, who is the chair of that committee. In turn, Mr. Sardiel will get in touch with Mr. Davis, the athletic director, and Mr. Boyce and Dr. Tean.
Whereas, Mr. DeLisandro, my recommendation would be for him to reach out directly to the building principal, who would be able, happy to talk to him about, you know, what went into his decision and who was being assigned where.
Great, thank you. Moving right along, we're going to the approval of the minutes for the June 16th regular meeting and executive session and the July 29th regular meeting and executive session. May I have a motion for those items, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Pontillo, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Kimmich. Any discussion on these items?
Second.
Mr. Boyce, can we ask you to do a roll call, please?
Sure. Ms. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo.
Yes.
Dr. Saden.
Yes.
Mr. Kimmich.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Horn.
Yes.
Mr. Sardiel.
Yes.
Mr. Jess.
Yes.
Mrs. Fabrizi.
Yes.
Thank you. Under Board President's report, I would like to say that I know we have a lot of comments this evening with regards to cuts that were made to the budget, which will be discussed during the next public portion of the meeting. What I would like to state is that the district lost over $500,000 in state aid due to the pandemic. The state has a huge revenue shortfall and they are spreading that out across every entity within the state. And unfortunately, Somerville was the recipient of a decrease in state aid. The administration had to come up with a way to fund that deficit, if you will, in order to help balance the budget. And while I know it was not an easy decision, they had to come up with a plan that helped them move forward. I believe on either August 26th or August 28th, NJSIAA, which is the scholastic governing body that regulates all of our sports, is supposed to come out with an announcement regarding sports. They were waiting for all the districts to make their decision for them and districts such as Piscataway, Carteret, West Windsor, Teaneck have already canceled all their fall sports. So that is what we are anticipating that NJSIAA is going to mandate, however, we do not know that. So I'm asking people to please stay tuned for that decision as well. And also, what I would like to see under, you're going to see an item this evening regarding volunteer coaches. And I would like to thank all those coaches who have volunteered to hold voluntary workouts during the summer. They had a nice discussion with Dr. Tean and volunteered their time for our students and also asked Dr. Tean if the district would be able to indemnify them through our insurance to ensure that the practices could happen. And our insurance company provided a positive response that they would and Dr. Tean reached out to each coach individually and provided them with a letter saying that they would be indemnified and held harmless and insured through our insurance. And I believe that they were all very appreciative to that. So again, I'd like to thank them for what they're doing for our kids and thank Dr. Tean for taking the time to reach out to the insurance company for them. That's all I have. I will now turn it over to Dr. Tean for his superintendent's report. Okay, before we start with the SSDS end of year report and the professional development plan and district mentoring plan presentations, I just wanted to add one little part to what you said, Derek, and that is that Tim, they actually, all the coaches were actually talking with Tim Davis, who then reached out to me. So between myself, Tim, and actually Brian Boyce got involved in contacting the insurance company. So it was really, I would say, a very big joint effort in order to bring that about. So I want to give credit where credit is due. It was definitely more Tim Davis than myself.
Thank you. We got too many Tims in the district, so.
Absolutely. All right, so I'm going to start with the SSDS and professional development plan. So Melissa Thager, you are going to be doing the presentation and I believe she's going to share her screen so everyone can see it.
Hi, everyone.
Hi.
I'm going to start with the professional development and mentor plan. Just if someone could give me a thumbs up if they actually see my screen. It should be a large blue dot in the center.
Yep. You're good.
Perfect. So professional development is at the core of what we do in Somerville so we can help our students achieve academically and in other venues. And so this is an overview of our plan for this school year. One of the things that really matters to us is we know that teachers matter more to student achievement than any other aspect of schooling. So we try to focus our energy and resources on what our teachers want and need to help best teach our students. In order to come up with the professional development plan, we go through a lot of different data points. We do teacher surveys. We did one after our joint PD day with Brantford last year. We had a lot of positive feedback from that. Dr. Tean's on our community survey this year, asking the parents, you know, what they wanted to see within our school. We use the SSDS data that we'll speak to a little bit later. Academic performance, we, last year, as you know, that there was no state testing, but we looked at the PSAT data. We have a benchmark assessment in the middle school called iReady. We had unit assessments called Edulastic. And we also started to use Linkit last year in the high school for the first time. So we look at all of those pieces. This year, we had our first approved CTE program from the Department of Education. And part of that is we have to do a comprehensive local needs assessment with an advisory board. We have someone from the Department of Labor on there. We have parents, we have students, we have teachers. Some of the data came from that. And then part of our data is pulled from observation of our teachers. So all of those pieces came together and overall for the district, there are four main areas that we're focusing on, but as many of you know, we're in the middle of a pandemic. So one of the big areas we're focusing on that's kind of covering everything this year is a virtual hybrid and live streamed learning, which speaks to the different learning environments that are going to be occurring at each of our buildings. So we're going to break down all of these different categories in each of the buildings. The principals in each building worked hard with their staff to come up with their building professional development needs and we put them all together as a district. So we're going to start with Vanderweer. In Vanderweer, you can see, we combined the social emotional learning and the cultural competency goals. We are using a, we started using it last year, but we're going to be using it more robustly this year, a second step curriculum. It is curriculum that's built on social emotional learning and equity and, you know, lessons on discrimination. So that is something that we're going to help train our staff on. It's going to be delivered through our counselors and our health teachers. Intervention, our multi-tiered systems of support, so helping our teachers help our students. We're using American Reading Company that will help us with our tier one and we have FNP as our tier two intervention. Social studies, you know, we're looking at the whole civic and professional development on creating a more robust social studies program for next year. And then two years ago, we did an equity audit in our school district. And as a result of that equity audit, we created equity teams. These equity teams met last year in February and we're going to continue the work this year and that is led by Dr. Eddie Fergus, who is out of Temple University, who helped us with our equity audit. Under academic in Vanderweer, we are adopting, the board's already adopted foundations K through three. We're doing professional development on foundations and some coaching that the teachers would like to have guidance as they're delivering the program. Our first training for it is actually going to be this Monday, foundations that will be in person. We also adopted American Reading Company as our guided reading program. We had used American Reading Company before in the past. It also comes with a reading kit to measure student performance called the Earl Up. And our teachers are going to get trained on that on the 25th. And I have to say that it, even though it is their summer, they're coming in voluntarily because of what they want to do for our students. We also will be doing our math pilot this school year and our teachers are going to be piloting different materials and you can stay tuned for next year for them to pick a new math program that speaks to the standards and student needs. With the virtual hybrid, we have been working as a district since May with a team of 30 teachers, our return to school instruction committee. We have already delivered some PD. Some of our teachers, I want to give a shout out to Martina Saad and Charlene Pacvic, did a presentation for the county on CSOW. We have videos on Google Classroom and we're going to do some overviews of lesson planning throughout the school year. So that is Vanderweer. Moving up to Somerville Middle School, again, the same categories, but it's broken down a little bit more. Academic, we, we started the new math program last year with iReady. We're continuing it this year and we also, this is an under academic that ties into equity. We are also offering open access to algebra. So we are using iReady to target students' strengths in math and to give more students access to Algebra I to stop some of the systemic barriers that keep students from achieving at the highest level. We are doing a continued training with school writing. We have a writing coach that comes in and works with our staff. They'll be doing it either virtually and in person. And then our, our STEM supervisor will be out for part of the year on maternity leave, which is a congratulations to her. But when she comes back in January, we're going to start focusing on partnering with RVCC on science PD and a new focus on the science curriculum. Under virtual hybrid, we're talking about engaging kids virtually, our middle schoolers, you know, having that classroom connection, whether they're in person or virtual is very important. So we're going to focus on that. And also how to extend the learning. As we know, the students have an ANPM model and those other times will be extending the classroom instruction that they get in person during the school day. In the social emotional and cultural competency, Mr. Benjamin, who is the principal, is going to be doing a micro messaging study. So during his faculty meetings, he'll be talking about micro messaging and implicit bias to help our staff understand the complexities of our nation right now. We are also moving the second step curriculum up to the middle school. Again, it is research based and that's for our social emotional learning. We are rewriting some social studies units. They are focusing on financial literacy and we're also going to be looking at civics. And of course, as we mentioned, we have the equity teams in the middle school that will be targeting specific projects in the middle school based on what they feel is area of needs. Last building is the high school. You know, Mr. Foley and his team, you know, worked with his teachers to come up with a lot of stuff. One of the things that we're really excited about is we partnered with an agency in Philadelphia to do restorative practices. So in the high school, we are going to have a group of teachers trained on restorative practices. They're going to work on implementing them in some of the classroom to help with some of the disciplinary data. And then we are going to do the train the trainer model. So we'll have experts in our high school on this program. We are also bringing in somebody from Sarah Lawrence University to talk about race in the classroom with our humanities teachers. Some of our other teachers have said, well, hey, we want to be part of this as well and they definitely will be, but we're just starting with humanities this year because this will be a long-term plan. And then our high school equity teams are going to pick a project that they would like to work on and focus on as they build their equity literacy. Academic, as we mentioned earlier, we are now doing Linkit in the high school. Linkit is benchmark data. So a lot of, you know, teachers are concerned about possible losses of learning because of the online learning model. So this will allow us to have data and target more specifically student areas of growth so that they can grow more quickly. We partnered with Drew University for the National Writing Project and I'm pleased to say thank you to our humanities supervisor, Val Carleo, because other districts have tried to partner with them and we are the last one that they took on. So we'll continue to do the National Writing Project at the high school. We have the new algebra curriculum that we mentioned in the middle school. Tyler Volpe and Ryan Yor worked very hard curriculum writing. There's a lot of virtual and online materials with this new resource and we're excited to be doing it and we'll be giving the teacher support with the actual person who wrote the textbook, Eric Milo. And then as we talked earlier about systemic barriers in our school system, you know, to become of more of an anti-racist district, we are also eliminating the applied level of classes in the freshman year and we will continue that up to the sophomore, junior, and senior year in the future. For the virtual live stream, we're going to, of course, talk about live streaming. Our return to school instruction committee is setting out a series of toolkits that they work on with their teachers about assessment. And then we're going to continue to look at combining periods. So when we go back to normal, we can look at block scheduling again as we discussed last year. So when we go back to normal, we can look at block scheduling again, as we discussed last year. So that was a lot of information. But what we know is professional development, instruction, practice, and training. That's what helps lead to our students' success. But in order to know if that success is actually met, we have to have measurements. So in each building, for each of the areas, we have specific things that we have put into place that we are going to use to measure the success of our initiatives. So talking with like Mr. Foley at the high school, you know, going to do a survey of the full staff with counselor feedback. We have Naviance, and we're going to be looking at usage of it. We do, we're going to do a staff survey again with our cultural competency. Because again, we did it a couple of years ago, and we'd like to see at the end of the school year, any growth based on the professional development we did. And then we'll have the academic tools such as Linkit. And also if they deliver the PSAT this year, we'll have the PSAT. So what's important to us is not only that we use the data, but that we actually measure what we're doing to see the success of the programs. And then the last piece is, you know, the said professional development and mentoring plan. And I know that you're all waiting patiently for the mentoring plan part with the mentoring plan. What we do to help bring new teachers into the building. Last year was my first year working with the program. It was phenomenal. We got a lot of great feedback. Our teachers go above and beyond to help our new teachers feel welcomed. They had positive feedback about what we did with the mentoring program last year, and they also had some suggestions. So for free, we're going to be partnering with Montclair State University this year. And they are going to help us to have our mentoring program include more of an academic focus along with the, you know, emotional supportive piece of being a new teacher. So I'm trying to be fast because I know Derek and Luke don't like long presentations. But do we have any questions about the professional development plan?
No, Melissa, that was very good. You covered a lot in a short period of time, very comprehensive. And I know that our staff will be better for all your efforts. So thank you very much.
Well, and they've been a huge part of it. So I thank them for all their work as well. All right. And so now you get to hear from me again. And so I am going to share the SSDS report with the board and the community. So give me one second.
This is something we have to do, I believe it's twice a year. And even though they say end of year report, it's actually for different data sets. So it gets a little confusing, but Melissa will hit that.
Give me one second. I just want to get my. And I'm going to be annoying again and ask for a thumbs up if you can see the blue slide. Perfect. We're going to be doing a lot of that this year. So this is, as Dr. T. Han just said, the student safety data. Our report period two went from January to June. As you know, in March, we left for virtual learning, but there were still some obligations for reporting. So this is our report for the end of the 1920s school year. But it's more specifically targeted in what happened the second half of the year. So we have to do SSDS. It used to be called EVVRS. I know that Candace loves all our acronyms in education. So it's Student Safety Data System. And it collects incidents of violence, vandalism, weapons, and substance use, as well as HIB trainings and things that we're doing to help support our students. And it's so the state has an overall look at what is occurring in schools. And all school districts are required to report. And I'll say Somerville, the people in each of the buildings who are involved in this do a very thorough job. And we report our data very accurately. So as Dr. T. Han said, the timelines are a little weird for this. So we just certified the report for the 1920s school year. And then we will start our new reporting period in September. It will go to January. And then we have to report sometime between January and June for the first part. And then again, it'll be next year between September and December for part two. So this is written in code and statute, so it's a regular obligation of the school board. If you look at the data, we have longitudinal data, which is kind of nice over time. What you'll see is this year, you know, it looks like violence is slightly higher. And whenever we see something like this, I always feel like a little, you know, set of, you know, panic because violence is such, you know, a tough word. But there's violence, there's threat simple, and there's threat complex. A threat simple can be something that happened in social media outside of the school day. But if it's reported to administration, we have to research, research it and report it in the SSDS in order to be transparent with what's occurring in the school. The same thing, you know, I think I've shared this, you know, story before when it comes to weapons offenses. When you see weapons offensive, you know, obviously you think of, you're somebody who's in the hall with a gun or something terrible. That is not the case in any way, shape, or form. My favorite story, this happened in another district, is a little boy was very excited. They were talking about, you know, World War II in his class. And so he, there was an occurrence in his home. And he took the grenade and he brought it in his backpack into school and shared it with his whole class. So unfortunately, the district at the time had to do it as a weapons offense. So there's very strict reporting guidelines. And so we look at the breakdown of the data pretty thoroughly and target programs if we see any trends that are disturbing. This is the breakdown by building. As we said, the violence, a lot of that had to do with social media issues. And we are working, you know, to do more training with our students on, you know, proper use of social media. You know, vandalism, it can be small things. It can be as simply as, you know, like, you know, messing up a bathroom or destroying a textbook, unfortunately. So this is where we are with the school in the second period. And then separate from the data, but also included is our harassment, intimidation, and bullying. And we'll share that data in a minute. But one of the things we also have to record in it is what we are doing to help support our students and staff with trainings. So district-wide, we do HIBs training for all staff. It's part of our mandated PD. We do training for all volunteers and coaches. In fact, before the board meeting tonight, we had a training for our new substitutes. And that's another piece of it. In the school, we do different things in different buildings. This past year, as I said, we started second step at Vanderweer. We have counseling groups and we have non-child studies teams, school psychologists that are fabulous with meeting with groups of students and trying to do preemptive things so things do not become incidents. And then we also have HIB training for all parents and freshmen at SHS orientation. This year, the parents, I think, are going to be virtual, but that information will still be shared. So this is what we've done this past year for training. There's one more. I'm not going to go through them all. But some of the things that we're excited about is at the Somerville Police Department, still partners with us at Vanderweer to do the DARE program, which the kids really like. This past year, we did some parent education workshops that were trauma-informed with the help of Dr. Saden. She connected us with somebody who did some great presentations for parents. And then we do different assemblies for our students throughout the year, you know, just to make them more aware. And then in both our middle school and high school, we now have an LGBTQIA and inclusiveity club that also helps address, you know, some of the things before they become an incident. So as you can see, the HIB numbers were quite small in the second part. SMS, the reason, there are seven, which is still quite small. But even during the pandemic, if there was any HIB report, they still needed to be investigated. As you can see, none of them were confirmed. So with all of our HIB reports, they're giving a unique identifier number. It is shared during the board minute, and it's reflected in the executive session minutes. And employees have access to the number of disposition of all reported acts through attendance at board meetings. So as also part of this in requirement in code is we need to post our HIB grades. We have not yet certified our 1920 HIB grades. That will happen by October, but our ones from 1819 are posted on the district website. And that concludes the SSDS report. Is that good, Derek? Was that fast too?
Excellent.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much for your time and have a good meeting.
Thanks, Melissa. For district highlights, I'm going to just take a few moments to address some topics that I think are of interest to our school community. Basically, three of them. The first one is reopening for September. I know as school year approaches, we're, you know, people are asking more and more questions. The second is our preschool program. And the third is, what was already brought up, the state aid reduction that Somerville suffered as a result of the budget cuts. So starting off with a September school opening, we are currently staying the course with the plan that we developed and that we've already shared with the community. We've already had approved by the NJ DOE and the state. However, we do continue to monitor the guidance by the Department of Education and Governor Murphy. And as always, if anything changes, we will be sure to inform our, our community and let them know what those changes have been, if any. I know that Governor Murphy recently announced that districts could have their school district go 100% remote. But I think there's more to that that people have to understand. And that is that they were allowed to do that if they could not meet the guidelines that were established in the road back. Our district had already submitted our plan. It was already, they took their checklist, they went through it, they checked off what we met, and we met all the guidelines. So we, that isn't necessarily an option for us. And for any district that is electing to go remote, just so you know, they have to provide an explanation of why they can't meet the road back plan and checklist. And they also have to develop a timeline for when and how they will address those items so that they can, you know, have a tentative opening date. So as I said, our reopening plan and checklist have already been submitted, reviewed, and approved. And so we move forward. Preschool, there have been some questions, and some of the parents have, have sent them in today and have reached out to the elementary school. Just so you know, parents of preschoolers, that you will be receiving a letter that will share some clarifying information. But I just wanted to address some of that tonight in less detail than what you'll get tomorrow. So I just want to start by sharing, just so everyone understands, that our preschool program is a 100% grant-funded program. So when we have a grant-funded program, that means that we have to operate under the guidelines that that grant has delineated for us. So, and as we also all know, the, we continue to get different guidance every day. There's different guidance that comes out. So our preschool guidance is separate from that that we receive for our regular schools. They still have to operate under the road back, but then we get different guidance for the preschool. So that guidance recently has changed as well with Governor Murphy's announcement of schools being able to go remote. So preschool is permitted to go remote if a parent so chooses to go 100% remote. Prior to this, they weren't. However, the students are limited to one hour. So we just want to make sure that that's out there. And like I said, there'll be a lot more. And the reason why they've limited to one hour is because of the age of the children. They want to limit the amount of screen time that they have at that age. And developmentally, they don't feel it's appropriate for preschooler to really be learning virtually. So as I said, tomorrow's letter will provide more. And lastly, I just want to focus on the reduction to our state aid and the resulting budget cuts. As many of you are probably aware, that New Jersey is experiencing some serious financial, serious financial crisis. Part of that is due to COVID, definitely. And as a result of COVID, the state allowed the taxpayers to delay their tax filings. So the state actually had a gap of several months that they had to fill. So it was up until end of September, beginning of October. So as a result, yes, the state did turn around and they reduced our state aid in Somerville. That reduction was $575,000. And I think it's also important to know that Bransburg is responsible for paying a percentage of all of our high school and district expenses. And when that happens, when we have to do a budget reduction, that, I'm sorry, a budget cut, they also benefit in a sense from that cut. So on one end, they're paying extra. On the other end, they're actually benefiting in a sense. But, you know, they're, they're in this with us 100%. So that $575,000 cut actually ended up being $814,000. So when you look at that, a lot of people are asking us, you know, what was the timeline? How did you guys find out? We found out on July 10th. That was a Friday, because the state normally comes out with bad news on Fridays. On Monday, July 13th, the team here in the district got together and they started to look at what were some of the potential cuts. And that's really what we did. We started compiling a list of all the potential cuts. We met with every single building, we met with every single department, and we asked, you know, where, where could potential cuts be? We developed that list, what we felt were the ones that made the most sense, that would have hopefully the least impact on students. And notice, I didn't say no impact on students because unfortunately, you know, a budget cut will always have an impact. And so we met then with the finance committee, which is a subgroup of the board. And we shared what our proposed budget cuts would be. From there, at our July 29th board meeting, we presented that same proposed cut, set of cuts to the board for them to review and hear about. It's important to know that the budget cuts didn't just hit one area. It wasn't not one area at all. In fact, we really strive to make sure that one area wasn't devastated and not one building. And not, you know, it was, it was a district-wide cut. So base staffing positions, which included teachers, instructional leave, secretarial, and administrative position. It impacted sports, which was intramural, gymnastics, ice hockey, freshman field hockey. It impacted stipendate positions, impacted professional development and administration tuition reimbursement and professional development. So as you can see, there, there are cuts across the board. And we cut positions that we had hoped to add in for this coming year. And one thing we've really strived for in this district is adding programs and adding staff members. And, you know, it hurts, it hurts a lot to have to sit there and admit that we can't do the things that we want to do. And so this, this was very painful for all of us. And you know, people in the community are quick to ask, and people in schools are quick to ask, you know, why couldn't such and such be saved? Or why did you pick this cut instead of some other cut? Once again, many conversations were had in order to develop this list of cuts. And we know that anyone that was impacted, obviously is not happy. The same thing is our district, which was impacted by the state aid cuts, really was not happy. And I can tell you that as soon as it happened, I went into Mr. Boyce's office and I said, why us? Like, we're already an underfunded district. Why are we getting hit? And, you know, we had a long conversation about that, which maybe I don't still understand. But I understand that we were impacted, as, as other districts were too, that are underfunded. When we make these cuts, they are not simply one-year cuts. I mean, because every budget item is something that we have to fund every single year. So when we propose a cut, it's, it's considered a permanent cut. Now granted, we're always open to if the budget changes, if we end up receiving more state aid in some other future year. But as, as I already shared, the state is in a financial crisis, and it does not look good for next year. And we're very concerned about that. But I, you know, once again, I can't stress enough that making any kind of cut, staff cut, program cut, it goes against everything that we want to do. And it, it really just does not go along with our, our goals. Our goal is always add more programs, add more opportunities for our students. And so such a cut really impacted everyone. It's not something we wanted to do. Fortunately, because of what was mandated to our district, to this state cut, I'm sorry, this state aid cut, we had no choice but to do this. So I just wanted to take a few moments to share that with everyone. I turn back over to you, Mr. Jess.
Thank you, Dr. T. Han. Just to add two cents to Dr. T. Han's comments, we all know how efficient the state can be. And we have been hearing that come October, Governor Murphy is going to have another announcement with regards to state aid. Now, the rumor out there among school business administrators and school administration is that it's going to be another cut, that he's not going to call us with the good news that we're getting aid back. So if it is another cut, then we're going to have to look, the board and the administration is going to have to look to, how do we deal with that cut? We're also under the impression that this is not just a one-year state aid crisis, that this crisis is going to follow districts for at least the next two to three years as they try to get back into and get more state aid and how those revenue sources can be found. can be found. The state aid formula has two specific areas of new revenue. One is brand-new money that the state puts in for school districts, and the other is money which is taken away from districts that are overfunded. The total of those two amounts of money this year was approximately $560 million, I believe. So, what the state did was they took away all the new money which districts were getting, and the $156 million that was left over that they were going to give, that they were taking away from the, from the overfunded districts, that's what was left for the myriad of districts that are still underfunded like Somerville. So, while Somerville's initial increase may have been a dollar, once the cuts came, their, their increase was now 20 cents, and that was because all the new money was taken away. And that's why Dr. Tean and Mr. Boyce and the administration had to come up with cuts because the revenue, the budget that was built was already based upon all of that revenue. And now, they were at a crossroads, and they needed to fix that hole that they had.
Thank you, John Luke.
Thank you, Mr. Jess.
So, just my two cents for what it's worth. I know that really doesn't provide a lot of comfort to people. I am also one of those people it doesn't provide comfort to, but at least now you may have a little bit of a better understanding of how the state robs Peter to pay Paul, and then takes everything away from Paul and leaves nothing. So, that being said, we're going to-
I just had two more real quick things. The first one is, I think Luke doesn't understand when he turns off his camera, it doesn't turn off his microphone, but that's here and there. The other thing is, I, I know, you know, this is a virtual meeting, and we're going to be opening up schools in a couple of weeks, and people might be saying, you know, why are you guys having a virtual meeting? We actually had every intent of doing this meeting live and in person. However, as we said, the governor constantly is changing things, and they changed the limits in schools or in, in places from 100 down to 25 or 25% that the building can hold. When I asked, how did that impact schools? I was told it doesn't, it's not applicable to any student events. However, it does impact board meetings. So, board meetings cannot, they have to abide by that 25 limit. So, that's why this is a virtual board meeting, it's, it's not an in-person one. And I hope that for our next board meeting, because Murphy is talking about lifting a lot of those restrictions and indoor dining finally, so hopefully, our next board meeting will be in person.
And, and just to add another comment to that as well, so there are nine board members from Somerville, plus Ms. Fabrizi from Branchburg for 10, plus Mr. Boyce and Dr. Tean for 12, plus the student rep, at least I know we have one right now, for 13. So, that would have left us with 12 people that we would have been allowed to accommodate during a board meeting. We have about a total of 47 to 50 people who are currently watching this live stream. So, that would have left a number of public members who would not have been able to access the board meeting publicly. And we were specifically told by the state and by board attorneys that any member of the public who wants to view the board meeting must have access to it. And so, having it virtually allows everybody to have access to that meeting. Although not in person, at least you can still witness live what is going on. And so, that was another factor as well. All right. Now, moving on to finance, I will turn it over to Mr. Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Jess. I just want to echo what has been said already about the budget and the budget cuts, it was very difficult decisions, and there were two goals. One was to, obviously driven by the fiscal need, and the other one was to impact the least amount of students. And that's really what the core of everything we looked at, and we looked at every dollar that we could sell. Thank you all for your hard work, appreciate it. It is recommended that items 1 through 12 be moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. Item number one, board secretary financial reports. Item number two, acceptance of monthly reports. Item number three, payroll. Item number four, the bill's list for Vanderweer Middle School. Item number five, line item transfers. Item number six, fiscal year 2020, 2021 ESEA grant submission. And the ESEA IDEA 2020-21 grant salaries. Item number eight, the IDEA preschool grant application for the 2021 fiscal year. Item number nine, joint transportation contract between, which was Raritan and Somerville Board of Education. Item number 10, joint transportation contract between Bound Brook Board of Education and Somerville Board of Education. Item number 11, joint transportation contract between the Bound Brook Board of Education and, okay, and middle business school, sorry. Item number 12, non-public school security aid program. Item number, that's it.
Okay. Thank you for moving those items, Mr. Carlson. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Any discussion? Mr. Boyce, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo.
Yes.
Dr. Saden.
Yes.
Mr. Kimmich.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Horn. Mr. Surgeal.
Yes.
Mr. Jess.
Yes.
Okay. It is also moved that items number 13 through 19 be moved upon by the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. Item number 13, a donation for Somerville High School of a 3D printer from Donna and Sarah Strano. Thank you all very much. Item number 14, IDEA basic grant application for the 2020-2021 fiscal year. Item number 15, the bill's list for the Somerville High School. Item number 16, the joint transportation contracts. Item number 17, more joint transportation contracts. Item number 18, the BioShine hand sanitizer and dispenser program that we were installing. And item number 19, donation to Somerville High School in the amount of $10,070 from the Somerville High School Music Booster Association used to fund the work for the marching band.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. May I have a second on those items, please?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Surgeal. Any discussion? Mr. Boyce, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo.
Yes.
Dr. Saden.
Yes.
Mr. Kimmich.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Horn. Mr. Surgeal.
Yes, on 13 through 18, I have stayed on 19.
Okay, Mr. Jess.
Yes.
Mrs. Fabrizi.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving along to policy, Dr. Saden.
No.
Or Mrs. Olson.
Mrs. Olson, sorry.
That's okay. I'm going to need some help on this because I foolishly forgot to make a copy to bring it up here on paper. However, there will be two actions that we need to take. One is approval on first reading of a policy that just came into the district with regard to how people can switch back and forth from in-person to virtual learning. And the second motion has to do with the second reading of several policies that were presented at our last meeting. One of them did have a change, and that was the attendance policy, and the only change was to bring the wording of that policy more into line with our traumatic, what's the word?
Trauma informed.
And, and that, that would be the two motions that I have, that first reading and the second reading.
Great, thank you. So, to, just to clarify, Mrs. Olson, under the first reading, it's policy 6173.1, which is learning. And item number two for second reading, it's policy 1250 for visitors, 3510 for operations and maintenance of plant, 3541.33 for transportation safety, 4111.1 and 4211.1 for nondiscrimination, affirmative action breastfeeding, 4111.2 and 4211.2 domestic violence, 5113 attendance, absence, and excuses, which Mrs. Olson just referenced. Policy and regulation, 5134, married, pregnant, lactating pupils. Policy 5141 health, 5142.2 illness, 5141.3 health examinations and immunizations, 6140 curriculum adoption, and 6161.1 evaluation and selection of instructional material. Having been moved by Mrs. Olson, may we have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. I'm going to go with Mr. Pontillo on that one. Any discussion? Mr. Boyce, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo.
Yes.
Dr. Saden.
Yes.
Mr. Kimmich.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Horn. Mr. Surgeal.
Yes.
Mr. Jess.
Yes.
Mrs. Fabrizi.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to curriculum, and Mrs. Van Horn.
Okay. The curriculum committee met June 16th, 2020, and we spoke of several items. We were on the success of the articulation day in June. We had talked about the feedback from parent teachers on the spring flexible learning. We were updated on new targeted skills, and we updated summer programs that were going to occur, the ESY title and the summer tutoring. We were shared, we shared the new curriculum approval flow chart. We updated what curriculum writing was going to take place during the summer. We talked about what new book club books were being considered for the 11th grade curriculum, and we looked at the New Jersey Department of Education standards for social studies, science, language, and technology. And it's recommended that item one be moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. That is the tool to prove the strong evaluation model for district-wide staff for the 2021 school year.
Thank you, Mrs. Van Horn. Being moved by Mrs. Van Horn. May we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Any discussion? Mr. Boyce, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo.
Yes.
Dr. Saden.
Yes.
Mr. Kimmich.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Horn. Mr. Surgeal.
Yes.
Mr. Jess.
Yes.
The superintendent of schools. Number two is the approval of books for Somerville High School. Number three, Somerville Public Schools District Mentoring Plan Statement of Assurance. Number four, the Somerville Professional Development Plan Statement of Assurance.
Thank you for moving those items, Mrs. Van Horn. May we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Any discussion? Mr. Boyce, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo.
Yes.
Dr. Saden.
Yes.
Mr. Kimmich.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Horn. Mr. Surgeal.
Yes.
Mr. Jess. Mrs. Fabrizi.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving along, buildings and grounds, Mr. Pontillo?
Yes. All of our efforts are to ensure the health and safety of our students and staff. We're abiding by the policy set forth by the Department of Education's The Road Back. At the high school, after each class passing, all high school, high-touch areas will be clean. That includes bathrooms, lockers, and handrails. At the middle school in Vanderweer, between each session, there will be a cleaning. Wipes containing at least 70% alcohol will be available in all classrooms. There are also sanitizing dispensers in every class, in the hallways, and all, at all entrances. All secretary areas have or will have plexiglass barriers in place. As for ventilation, Somerville is in very good place compared to other school districts. All of our classrooms have fresh air intakes. No areas of any of the school buildings will be utilized by any student or staff that does not meet the requirements set by the Department of Education and our public health officials. All cleaning products are CDC and EPA approved. Finally, thank you to the efforts of Mr. Gabriel, the head of our Buildings and Grounds, and Mr. Brian Boyce. We have received a grant from New Jersey Clean Energy Direct Install to upgrade our lighting utilizing LED fixtures and elements for greater efficiency and ultimately a significant cost savings. That's the conclusion of my report.
Thank you, Mr. Pontillo. And now, making a rare appearance with an agenda item, we turn it over to Mr. Kimmich and the Technology Committee.
Thanks, Mr. Jess. Just as an update, the committee met on August 13th at our meeting. We had a really good discussion about the staff role on the Chromebooks that's taking place at this time. Again, Ms. Matthews worked very hard behind the scenes with a number of other staff members to actually facilitate the drive-up exchange, basically, of the Chromebooks, because even that process is very, very complicated by the COVID-19 situation. So, I appreciate that, appreciation to everybody for all the efforts around that. We also talked about the distribution of devices for students, and she provided an update on that. As with many districts in, in really across the country, and especially in this area, there is a delay in the delivery of a number of devices that were ordered for students, but the district had backup plans to be able to facilitate, making sure that we were able to move forward with our, our one-to-one initiative. And again, that ratio being able to provide and support the distance learning that students will be doing as part of the hybrid model that's taking place. So, again, a great appreciation to everybody that's been involved in making sure that even though we didn't get orders in the way that we wanted to have them in, we're still able to facilitate the, the hybrid model that's, that's taking place at this point. She also provided an update about the state grant opportunity and eligibility to support the funding of devices moving forward. So, again, lots of work that is taking place behind the scenes on that. And again, she, she gave an update on the learning management system, again, being all Google as we go into the school year, and again, the training that will be taking place to support that. So, great appreciation for her, and I think all the people that are working behind the scenes, a lot of times the tech department, I think, when it's working well, nobody knows that they're working on things because it just goes well. And I think that that's a testament to all the work that they've been doing, really across the summer and across the year. So, with that, it is recommended that item one be moved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools.
Thank you, Mr. Kimmich. And item number one is the Digital Divide Grant Application. Being moved by Mr. Kimmich, may I have a second on that item, please? Thank you, Mr. Pontillo. Any discussion? Mr. Boyce, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Ms. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo.
Yes.
Dr. Saden.
Yes.
Mr. Kimmich.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Horn. Mr. Surgeal.
Yes.
Mr. Jess.
Yes.
Mrs. Fabrizi.
Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Tean, could you provide a brief comment as to what the Digital Divide Grant is so that the members of the public have an idea of what it's for?
Sure. It's based on money that divided to districts that had participated in a survey, and the survey really focused on what each district had in terms of pieces in community, and it also focused in on what they saw as potential needs moving forward. And so, as a result of that, the district was awarded a certain dollar amount that we, and they give you some guidelines of what you can and can't spend it on. So, that's what that grant is. It is basically delineating what we're going to do, how we're going to spend it, and to meet those needs. And the close of the divide.
And isn't, I'm sorry, I was going to say, isn't there a portion of this which is also based on philanthropic donations as well?
Yes, yes, there's partnerships.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Moving along to- Moving along to someone who is never at a loss for words, especially when he can't find the mute button, turn it over to Student Activities, Mr. Sergiel.
Yes, thank you, President Jess. Yes, first to the public, I just want to apologize for the cameo appearance behind me. I thought I did hit the mute button as well, so I apologize for that. Yeah, I spoke to, I spoke to Athletic Director Davis, and he is waiting to hear from the N J S I A by Friday with regards to how we're going to move forward with fall sports, particularly indoor and outdoor sports. So, there will be more to come on that. I thank you, President Jess, for speaking to that earlier. And also, Dr. Tien, thank you for speaking to the, to the student, I'm sorry, the athletic volunteers. So, and, you know, last but not least, this pandemic has caused a lot of, just for lack of a better term, impact on the community, families, students, athletes, and, you know, all of our activity members. And, you know, I just want to share in that hurt as well. A lot of decisions were made, were not easy. But with that said, at the end of the day, your health and safety moving forward is going to be most important. So, because when we do come at this, we want everybody safe and healthy. So, with that said, there is more to come as far as what the state will decide on as far as fall, fall sports and activities. So, I do have a resolution, and it is resolved that the Board of Education of Somerville Public School District and the County of Somerset, as provided by Chapter one seventy-two as laws of one seventy-nine, hereby enrolls Somerville High School as a member of the New Jersey State Interscholastic, Interscholastic Athletic Association to participate in the approved inter-school athletic program sponsored by the N J S I A.
Thank you, Mr. Sergiel. May we have a second on that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Any discussion? Mr. Boyce, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Yes.
Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo.
Yes.
Dr. Saden.
Yes.
Mr. Kimmich.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Horn.
Yes.
Mr. Sergiel.
Yes.
Mr. Jess.
Yes.
Mrs. Fabrizi.
Yes.
Thank you. And, and I would also ask, there is a fee that goes along. Every district who is a member of N J S I A has to pay a fee. So, I would ask if the district, if we would have Mr. Davis reach out to N J S I A and ask them if they happen to cancel fall sports, if the membership fees are going to be prorated. Because I don't understand why we would have to pay them a fee if none of our student athletes are going to be participating in state-sponsored sports. All right, moving on to personnel, Dr. Tien.
Okay. Resolved that the Board of Education approve and or accept the following appointments upon recommendation of superintendent schools, and appointments and salaries are contingent upon verified documentation. Number one and two are both unpaid childcare leave of absences. Number three is the appointment of the attached list of individuals to, that worked at the, as instructional assistants for the extended school year. Number four is the same thing, a list of individuals that worked as instructional assistants for the extended school year. Both of those are at different amounts of time. Number five is the improvement of internship placement for a Caldwell University student. Number six is a change in salary guide placement. Number seven is the approval of the listed individuals to provide CARES tutoring, which is using the CARES or ESSA grant. Number eight, to approve the appointment of the listed staff members for the same thing for tutoring students in reading and math. Whereas, number nine is the staff members that are going to be doing curriculum writing for middle school science. Number ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen are unfortunately the individuals that are impacted by our state aid reduction that we had to reduce in force. Number fifteen is the listed staff members for, as, that are serving as the co- coordinators for Camp S M S, which is the orientation to the middle school for the incoming sixth graders. Number sixteen is a list of individuals that will help facilitate that day, or the two days, when Camp S M S goes on for those sixth graders. Number seventeen is to accept the resignation of Lindsay Gottfried from a fourth-grade teaching position. Number eighteen to approve the transfer of Courtney Grace to that vacated position. Number nineteen is to create one elementary school teaching position. Number twenty is to prove the transfer of Alyssa Freeman for this current, for this upcoming school year into that position. Number twenty-one to accept the resignation of Jay Trandisgard to, as an instructional assistant who is retiring and has done great work with the district. Number twenty-two is another unpaid childcare leave of absence. Number twenty-three is the appointment of Leslie Hernandez, who had been working in our Bandevir Media Center. She's going to be taking on the role of the fourth, as a fourth-grade teacher, replacing Sarah Legore, who is now moving to child study.
Thank you. May I have a motion on those items, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Saden. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Olson. Any discussion? Mr. Boyce, roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson. Sorry. Yes. Okay, Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo.
Yes.
Dr. Saden.
Yes.
Mr. Kimmich.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Horn.
Yes.
Mr. Sergiel.
Yes.
Mr. Jess.
Yes.
For ninety-two, district and district wide, resolve the Board of Education to approve and or accept the following appointments upon recommendation of superintendent schools. These appointments and salaries are also contingent upon verified documentation. Number twenty-four is to approve the listed individuals to the high school's school improvement panel. Number twenty-five is to accept the resignation due to the abandonment of position of a part-time bus aid. Number twenty-six is to appoint an individual to that vacated position. Number twenty-seven is to accept the resignation of an individual as a part-time bus aid. Number twenty-eight is to approve the appointment of another individual to that vacated position. Number twenty-nine is to approve the appointment of the attached staff members to be instructional assistants for the extended school year program at the high school level. Number thirty, to approve the appointment of the attached individuals also to serve as instructional assistants for the extended school year at the high school level, both once again at different amounts of time. Number thirty-one, to approve the enlisted individual to do her research project. She's from Montclair State University, and she'll be doing that in our district. Number thirty-two, to approve the change in salary guide placements. Number thirty-three, to approve the appointment of the listed individuals to serve as substitutes for the upcoming school year. Number thirty-four, to approve two listed individuals as substitute nurses for the district. Number thirty-five, to approve the listed individual as a, to complete our internship placement from Fairleigh Dickinson at Somerville High School. Number thirty-six, once again, like the other ones, unfortunately, this is the reduction in force that we're approving. Number thirty-seven, same thing, is a reduction in force. Number thirty-eight, transferring of an enlisted individual from the high school down to the preschool secretarial position. Number thirty-nine, to approve the listed individual to be a teacher in the middle school for physical education and health. Number forty, to approve the appointment of, the moving of the individual from the high school to the elementary school. Number forty-one, to approve the appointment of the listed individual, movement of the high school to the elementary school. Number forty-two, as I said before, this is transfer from a fourth-grade teacher into an L D T C child credit team position. Number forty-three, as Mr. Jess had brought up earlier, this is the listed individuals who were serving as athletic volunteers over the summer, during the summer recess. Number forty-four is a list of guidance department members in the high school that will do a maximum of one point five days over the summer. Number five, to approve the listed individuals to serve as summer band volunteers. Number forty-six, to approve the two individuals to work the summer band camp. Number forty-seven is the paid maternity leave of absence. And number forty-eight, to approve the appointment of the anti-bullying specialists at the high school. And forty-nine is to do the same thing as the alternate anti-bullying specialist. Number fifty, to approve the newly created position of teacher of depth, American Sign Language, and fifty-one is to approve the individual to fill that position.
Thank you. May we have a motion on those items?
I'll take a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Pontillo. May we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Any discussion?
Second.
Mr. Boyce, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Carlson.
Staying on items thirty-three and thirty-eight, yes total.
Okay, Mrs. Olson.
Yes.
Mr. Pontillo.
Yes.
Dr. Saden.
Yes.
Mr. Kimmich.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Horn.
Yes.
Mr. Sergiel.
Staying on forty-six, yes on everything else.
Mr. Jess.
Yes.
Mrs. Fabrizi.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to old business. Is there any old business from anybody on the board? No, seeing none, may I have a motion to close old business, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved. Moving on to new business. Is there any new business from any member of the board? Seeing none, may I have a motion to close new business, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved. All right. Now, we're open to the public for discussion. I have a list, and I, like I said before, I will also be checking the comments that have since been submitted. Please excuse my cheaters. So, I'm going to read them as we go through them, and then if there is any discussion or answers from the superintendent, they will follow after all the comments have been read. First one, and, and some of these were already asked in the first portion of the public agenda, but they showed up again, so I'm going to read them. The first one is from Jamie Kraska of Somerville. Is it possible to open up a discussion about the recent termination of the Somerville High School gymnastics team as per as the recent emails and letters written to the board? The Booster Club is willing to provide some solutions to the budget issues. As we stated earlier, yes, please reach out to Mr. Sergiel for that, and he said he has already reached out to Mr. Davis. So, hopefully, we will be able to get a meeting for that. The second comment is from Stephanie Dale of Somerset. As for the reopening of schools, I am concerned about mask breaks and students who are not required to wear masks for medical purposes. Will parents be made aware if there is a student who is not required to wear a mask in their child's classroom? Will I be notified if a student in my child's class contacts COVID-nineteen? Will the entire class be asked to quarantine? Item number three, from Jason Kraska of Somerville. I would like to request that the admin B O E publish the agenda in advance of the meeting to give the public time to read and form any questions or comments it may have about the agenda. Twelve and a half hours prior to the meeting and still no information. And I did read your comment under the public portion, Mr. Kraska. The next one comes from Lara Johnson of Nishanik Station. Based upon the letter from S H S Gymnastics Booster Club and those from gymnasts, parents, and other supporters, open discussion during the meeting regarding the options for funding the program. The next one is from Laura Porovekio. Please excuse me if I butcher your name. A three-part question. One, when will we know if we are having A M or P M half-days? What needs to occur for schools to go completely virtual? One case of COVID, question mark? Will parents find out if a teacher is diagnosed with COVID? On a separate note, when will parents be able to collect student belongings from the spring? The next one comes from Amy Clarkson of Somerville. I would like to confirm you received the numerous letters of support for opening a discussion about the gymnastics program, including solution-oriented proposals that have been brought forth to the B O E. A response is requested. Yes, Ms. Clarkson, all the board members have received the numerous emails and letters of support. Dr. Tien also forwarded them to us as well, so some of us received them twice. And as stated earlier, we are open to a discussion, and Mr. Sergiel will be spearheading that. The next question, comment comes from Mary Volpe from Montville. I would like to confirm your receipt of the numerous letters of support for opening a discussion on the S H S gymnastics program and solutions that have been brought forth to the Board of Ed. The next one comes from Lara Johnson. Did I already read that one? I may have already read that one. Hold on. I did. Sorry. The next one is from Brett Schwed. I hope I pronounced that right. I would like to submit that an open discussion be held on finding ways to maintain the gymnastics program for the twenty-twenty season and beyond. I believe that the student athletes, coaches, Booster Club, and parents should have a voice in this conversation. These students have had much already taken away from them due to COVID. Wouldn't it be better to have an open dialogue to find creative solutions to maintain this longstanding program rather than make a cold decision to eliminate it without discussing alternatives? Please read these comments. I have. The next one is from Bronwyn Pucci from Somerville. Parents of incoming preschoolers have received no communication about what the preschool program will look like with regard to social distancing. Many incoming preschoolers will be starting school for the first time and may need frequent reassurance and support from teachers when they are adjusting to separating from their parents. Preschool students may require assistance putting on coats, using the toilet, putting on their own masks, opening up lunch boxes, putting on shoes, or any other number of developmentally appropriate skills. As parents, we have no idea how this will be accomplished in the classroom. Additionally, although parents of incoming preschoolers were able to select the fully virtual option for our students on the survey that we completed last week, we are now learning that this will not be offered for preschool. There has been no formal communication or notification from the school district regarding this. Parents are only learning this very important piece of information through community networks on social media. Parents are entirely left out of the loop regarding a vital piece of information, and we made a decision about our children's education without knowing everything we needed to know. School begins in three weeks. Time is running out. Many private preschool programs are already full, leaving parents between a rock and a hard place if we don't want to risk the exposure to the entire V D V community. Many preschool students have older siblings in the district for whom we can opt for fully virtual instruction and limit our family's risk. But we are only now, at the eleventh hour, learning that we don't truly have this choice with a child in preschool. Lack of communication regarding this matter is unacceptable and unconscionable. The public preschool program should be available as a fully virtual program the same way it is to the rest of our students. The next one is from Timothy Clarkson of Somerville. Regarding the status of the high school gymnastics team, as a member of the gymnastics Booster Club, I would like an open discussion about the S H S gymnastics program to investigate alternatives to terminating the sport at Somerville High School. A year ago, the team and its advocates engaged productivity, productively with the board, creating a viable path to sustain the team's existence. In that open partnership and discourse with the board, the team grew in participants, raised substantial funds, and acted in good faith and transparency with the board. Given current developments, I would like to revisit the future of the team, which is so vital to its participants and their connecting with the fabric of the S H S community experience. Significantly, given the funds currently in the Booster Club account, there needs to be a public discussion with, about how the team could exist as a largely or entirely self-funding operation, pending clarity from the board or athletic director on the specifics of what it costs to operate the team annually. What was the process by which the board made its decision to terminate gymnastics? What is the cost of running the gymnastics program annually? May the team partner with the board using funds from the Booster Club to hold this or future sessions, seasons? May the team be self-funding if the board chooses publicly to terminate funding for the gymnastics team? Additionally, I would like to confirm you received the numerous letters of support for opening a discussion on the gymnastics program and solutions that have been brought forth to the B O E. Thank you for your investment in the development of the youth of this community in every aspect of their educational experience. Thank you for your investment in the development of the youth of this community and every aspect of their educational experience. This is where together we prove who is indeed all-in for this and future generations of the Ville. The next one is from Lauren Hutchinson of Somerville. Governor Murphy announced Executive Order Number 175 on August thirteenth, which permits districts to start the year with remote-only education if they cannot meet with the requirements set out. It also provides an additional checklist for the district to reconsider in their opening plans. Is there any indication that the district may not be able to certify to the Department of Education seven days prior to the start of the school year that the district has policies and procedures in place to meet the minimum health and safety standards set forth in Paragraph Two of Executive Order 175? The next one is from Kate Clarkson of Somerville. Speaking as a member of the gymnastics team entering my senior year of high school, I would like to say that I was distraught to hear that the board cut the gymnastics program. Last year, my teammates and I worked incredibly hard to fundraise and save the team. To think that all that hard work will be ignored makes me not only disappointed, but also angry. We would like the right to use the money we raised for our gymnastics team. Cutting the gymnastics program is not just taking away a sport, it's taking away a family. We would like to confirm you also received the numerous letters of support for opening a discussion on the gymnastics program and solutions that have been brought forth to the board, to the Board of Education. The next one is from Loriann Flanagan of Branchburg. I would like the BOE to provide specific rationale for why SHS Girl Gymnastics Team was eliminated after the Board of Ed gave a decision in 2019 to the team that it would stay intact for two years, until 2021, as long as Booster Club met certain requirements. Gymnastics is a sport with no body contact and can easily navigate the COVID-19 guideline, so this seems like a decision made for other reasons. Booster Club has funding and want to work with BOE on a collective decision that opens up options for a group of hard-working young ladies. The next one is from Ruth Ann Scher of Branchburg. I want to be in school to teach, but I would be more comfortable if we started the year 100% remotely. As much as I am looking forward to seeing the students and feel in-school instruction is superior to virtual learning, I am worried that all the important features needed to make the school safe for all will not be in place and time. Thank you for your hard work for our students. The next one is from Victoria Kessler of Bridgewater. There is nothing I would love more for all of us to go back to school as usual in September, but until it is safe. 100% virtual instruction is the only solution that will protect our entire community. All-Ville students, staff members, administrators and families deserve to be safe. The next one is from Bethany Wagner of Somerset. Considering varsity gymnastics review moved due to budget cuts, I understand the Athletic Committee and Board members are aware of the amount of money the gymnastics team raised last year and I am wondering why alternative, no alternatives were considered such as self-funding. The next one comes from Marisol Espinoza from Bedminster. My name is Marisol Espinoza and I am a teacher at Somerville High School. I am also the Chair of the Somerset County Education Association Equity Alliance Committee. Recently, a friend shared an article, "Remote Learning is Hard, Losing a Family Member is Worse", that all educators serving our low-income population in Somerville need to read. The opinion piece in the New York Times allowed me to revisit my childhood and imagine living with COVID while stricken by poverty. For a while, I have felt genuinely concerned for my safety and that of my family. Fortunately, my family and I have a privilege to have access to healthcare. We receive annual physicals and have the opportunity to make changes to live a healthier lifestyle. If necessary, we are also able to isolate and prevent the spread of the virus in our home. That was unfortunately not always the case. I have experienced hardships similar to our low-income students in Somerville. Poor nutrition, limited access to healthcare, living in a tiny apartment and living paycheck to paycheck. Additionally, the language barrier made it impossible for my mother to stay informed and adequately, adequately advocate for my brother and me. The truth is that the hardships experienced as a child give me insight to problems associated with minority, low-income families in COVID-19. I am generally fearful for our low-income community members who have limited or no access to healthcare and who may also live in crowded conditions that make it hard to prevent the spread of COVID-19 to other family members. The worst outcome is the loss of a family member. My father's heart attack at the age of forty-nine demonstrated the long-lasting effects of lacking proper healthcare. A simple procedure would have saved his life, would have prevented the financial and emotional hardship we later experienced as a family. I ask you to truly consider the detrimental effects that reopening school buildings would have on our community as a whole. What adverse childhood experiences we will create by the spread of COVID and deaths in our community? And how will they, how will we rectify ourselves? The only way to secure the safety of our community is to start students and staff 100% virtual. The next one is from Mark Opaleski. Who is ultimately responsible for making the decision as to whether or not the high school will open for in-person education in September? What is the last possible day the decision can be made or changed? Mr. Opaleski is from Branchburg. All right, now if you'll excuse me for a moment, I have to get over to the next page. Okay. The next comment comes from Lisa Heath, who is from Cliffwood. 100% virtual until it is safe. Karen Mock of Boundbrook. I would prefer for schools to be 100% virtual until it is safe.
From Boundbrook.
Sally Booth from Bullion Road. School opening plan. Would it be possible to match students who are choosing to stay home and with teachers who have comorbidities and need to stay safe? By pairing these groups, we can keep everyone safe. The next one is from Kerry Ireland of Bridgewater. I want to give a big thank you to our custodial staff across all three schools who have been working extra hard this summer in preparation for all of us to come back. We have hand sanitizer stations everywhere, new hands-free soap dispensers, new hands-free paper towel holders and Plexiglas installed in all of the high-traffic areas. Thank you all for your hard work. The next is from Denise Lang, Nishanik Station. Does the Board of Ed see the irony in having virtual meetings while approving a plan that requires staff to be in daily contact with potential COVID-19 carriers? What message does that send? It tells the staff that the BOE considers the lives of the BOE members as more important than the lives of staff. Be well and stay safe. The next one's a long one. The next one is from Rebecca Bell of, trying to see, of Springfield. First of all, I want to thank all of you who have worked tirelessly to come up with a plan for September. Unfortunately, the news has been filled with schools that opened and immediately had to be closed because of COVID-19. It seems inevitable that we will eventually have an outbreak in our schools where our kids and staff get sick and we need to close. We need to start the school year virtually and remote for the safety of all of our kids and families. The high school is still not safe even with the current schedule. Last year, we had shared cla, a classroom with four other teachers. The classrooms are currently set up for fifteen kids per classroom. We are teaching for six periods. That means that possibly ninety-five people would share one room. Then the kids will leave and go into the hallways. Even if your child wears a mask correctly, inevitably the kids in front of him or her will put their mask down to talk to their friends or just take a mask break and contaminate the hallways that we all must walk through. We do not have the ventilation to circulate the air and make the spaces safe as, so all of our rooms and hallways will be unsafe. We also need to think about equity. There is a wide range of socioeconomic status in our school district. Many of our students and students' families do not have access to healthcare and these are the most vulnerable populations to COVID-19. When the COVID closure happened in March, students reached out to me about not having healthcare, how to keep safe and where to access healthcare. Many students are also living in full intergenerational houses where social distancing inside their homes is not possible and they could possibly infect many family members, including their grandparents and great-grandparents. Lastly, I would like to talk about the staff. As I pointed out with the numbers at the beginning, teachers will end up getting exposed to every person in the building since we are teaching on both A and B days. We are putting ourselves and our own families at risk. One of our own colleagues just got out of the hospital and was very close to dying. This has hit many of us close to home. Additionally, the staff who have children at home are dealing with virtual learning schedules like OWL where some days the some days the staff, hold on, this keeps jumping on me. Staff will move to home to provide childcare and help with virtual learning. This is also an equity issue. The staff that can afford it will hire babysitters. The staff that can't will be forced to take unpaid leave or a reduction in pay. Many staff and their, ask their parents to support them with childcare, but if we are in the buildings and exposed to everyone, we cannot risk exposing our elderly parents. Please help the staff take care of their own kids and families as well as the Somerville kids and family. On behalf of all the families who cannot be here to advocate for themselves and the needs of their community, especially low-income families, I implore you to start the school year virtually and remotely for all students and staff for all of our safety. The next comment comes from Marilyn Harder of Sailorsburg, Pennsylvania. Protect the students, teachers and all families 100% virtual until it's 100% safe. We can safely teach and learn from home. The next comment is from Lauren Hutchinson from Somerville. I understand from Ms. Daggers' report that there is a pilot this year in Vanderveer for the new math curriculum for next year. How is the curriculum chosen for the pilot? Is Ed Reports the nonprofit that reviews educational material consultant? Just trying to understand the process for implementing new curriculum in the district. Susan Johnson from Branchburg. Can you please explain how you feel it is safe for staff and students to return to in-person instruction, yet you do not feel it is safe for the small group of you, the Board of Ed, to meet in person? Another comment from, oh, let's see, hold on. Melanie Williams of Stewartsville. As much as I would love to return to my classroom to teach in person, I believe we can only do this when we can be certain that returning is safe for everyone. And now we're going to have, I have a follow-up question from Mr. Kraska of Somerville. While Mr. Tean talked about budget cuts of $575,000 this year, can the board please comment on the amount of additional state aid that Somerville still received over last year's budget? And if they could comment on the additional money the Board of Ed received last year from state that was not in the budget but went into district surplus? And a follow-up comment from Denise Lang from Nishanik. Thank you for answering my question as to the irony of board meetings being virtual while approving in-person teaching. The governor has limited the number of people that can be together in an indoor setting. In fact, the board could meet in a single room and stream to the public as teachers will be doing in the classroom. And we have one more comment from Peter Petuco of Somerville. Thank you to the administration and board for developing a well-thought-out comprehensive return-to-school plan. Many families are eager to send their kids back to school and will take the necessary precautions to keep students and staff safe. We appreciate the work that went into the plan and hope we stay the course for the well-being of our kids. They cannot be out of school any longer. In case you're wondering what I'm doing, everybody, I have to wrap the text in the boxes in the Google Doc so that I can read it or else it would be total chaos. Uh, the next comment is from Helene Gerson from East Brunswick. Please remember to keep the students and all teachers safe and start the school year 100% virtual. We count on you to make decisions that will help us all. Thank you all for your hard work. All right. There being no other comments from the public, may I have a motion to close the public session, please? Thank you, Ms. Matthews. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved. All right, I'm, I'm going to ask Dr. Tean if he would be able to respond to some of those questions uh, with regards to the ones for gymnastics. As was stated earlier, um, the board is open to having a meeting to discuss this. And as Mr. Sergeal indicated, and as he is the Chair of Athletics, he has reached out to Mr. Davis so that a discussion can be had. To the questions regarding why the board is not virtual, um, I will agree with Ms. Lang's last statement that the board, the board could meet in a room and livestream. However, if the board is live, we have to give the public the opportunity to be live with us, not streaming from another room, which would mean that board members would have to be physically present and public would have to be physically present. And because we would have to limit it to twenty-five people, we would not be able to ensure that every member of the public who wanted to participate live and in person would be able to get there. And that goes into a whole nother realm of issues that we would have to deal with. I am not going to put Mr. Boyce on the spot with regards to the state aid question that was followed up by Mr. Kraska, but I will ask him if he would please prepare some information to give to Dr. Tean so that Dr. Tean can reach out to Mr. Kraska and answer his question as well. And then with regards to everybody's comments about being virtual, uh, I will let Dr. Tean also answer that. Everybody, please remember that the Board of Education is a policy approving body. And so we do not get involved and nor is it our charge under statute to get involved with the plans that are put forth by the administration. We do everything we can to be supportive of our administration because we believe that we have a great one and that they do take everything into consideration. As somebody alluded to earlier, there were numerous changes to the guidance that the state provided to us this year. Dr. Tean had completed with the administration's help, the district plan for remote learning or in-person. And after he submitted it, the very next day, changes came out from the state of which Dr. Tean had to go back and recertify and answer more questions. So this is constantly evolving. So we ask you to, you know, please be patient with us. We will do our best. The last thing that we want to do is put anybody in harm's way and we certainly want to get all of our kids back because all of our kids missed a lot last year and we certainly don't want to have to worry about them missing a lot this year. Hard choices have to be made sometimes, which really is not fair that we are put in this position by the state. But I think the administration did a very good job with the support of the Finance Committee and everybody else on this board to help ensure that the academic success of our students does not take a great hit. And we need to remember that academics should come first for our students. While we all want our kids to be part of athletic teams that are successful and we will do everything we can to ensure that happens, we need to make sure that the academics that our teachers are providing to our kids is second to none. And I think that we do that very well every day. So with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Tean if he wants to answer any questions. And ladies and gentlemen, also, please remember, if he does not answer all your questions today, it does not mean that he is ducking the question. It means that he doesn't have the information right at his fingertips, but that he will get back to you because the public portion, if you remember, is for the public to provide input and ask questions. It is not to have a discourse back and forth with the board. While we try to do that as much as we can, there are some times when we cannot. And sometimes, uh, the administration needs a little bit more time to put a more detailed answer together to give it to everybody. So I ask you for your patience with that as well. And I'm sure some of you are shaking your heads and, you know, sticking your tongue out at me, but I'm, I'm just telling you how it is. So I hope you at least appreciate the candor and now I'll turn it over to Dr. Tean.
Thanks. Um, I think I'll start with the 100% virtual that we heard from numerous people on. Um, you know, I think Derek, you kind of hit on a lot of the answer, which is that, you know, we did develop a plan. Uh, the plan was approved, which means that we met all the requirements that the state deemed necessary in order for a school district to be permitted to open instead of, uh, having, being forced to go 100% virtual. Um, in fact, our plan was so well-received by the state that they're actually requested that they use our plan as a model for the rest of the state because it had all the components. Um, and I really believe that, you know, our plan is comprehensive for many different reasons. Mostly due to the, um, the work of all the individuals that have been working every day and night on this, uh, in preparing, you know, our school so that it's ready. We've had a very successful, uh, extended school year program. Um, we've had, where numerous teachers and instructional aides and administrators all worked. Uh, we had same thing with a reading, summer reading program. Um, as you already alluded to as well, that we've had some sports that have, have started with the summer session with volunteers, volunteer coaches, all participating in those things as well. So, you know, we, we have a lot of pieces already in place and every day we're reevaluating and trying to improve. So I think that, that answers that. I can tell you that, yes, I, I mean, we hear a lot of what the comments that were put in the, uh, in the Google Doc on that. But at the same time, I've also heard from a lot of staff members that have come up to me and, or emailed me or texted me or called me and said, you know, they're thankful that we're opening, they're, they're looking forward to it. I'll, I'll kind of go back to the very beginning and I'll try to go in the order that you kind of, I was trying to jot them down. The mask break, that was the question that was asked. And I think that was kind of dovetailed in with a COVID-19 question if somebody is diagnosed. So mask breaks, so far, we have not received one single request by a student for an exemption of wearing the mask. If we do receive that, that, um, yes, we would, we would have to honor that if it's for a medical reason. But we would be putting things in place within the classroom, meaning that student would be sitting, you know, six feet or more away from everyone. We would also put up a barrier around the area where they're sitting. So we would put things in place. And as far as notifying, uh, families if there's somebody in that classroom, even though the state does not require us to do that, and obviously we would not notify which student it is, but I think that would be kind of obvious to the students that are in the classroom. But, um, we would be sending out most likely, because we're, we're kicking that one around. We would be sending out probably some kind of a notification to families in that classroom, similar to what we would do. similar to what we would do for like a peanut allergy, where it would say, "Just so you're aware, there is a student in the classroom." So I think that that answers that question. The COVID-19 weather, and I think there was two different ones that were asked on that, student and staff notification of COVID. If there is a positive case, it's not like a suspected case, it's a positive case. If there's a positive case in a classroom, families will be notified that there was a positive case, similar to if someone had, you know, chicken pox or anything else, a notification would go out like that. As far as like what would happen as a result of that, we would be following the guidance provided to us by the Health Department. And their guidance, what they would develop, will be based upon what's called contract tracing, where they would find out who the student is, who did they come in contact with, how long were they in contact? Because the determination that they make about what people in a particular room need to do is based upon the length of the exposure and how close they were to the infected individual. So that's why it's really important that we take attendance records. We know seating charts of students, where they're sitting in a classroom. So all of that comes into play to help us with providing the Health Department with that information so they... we can assist them as much as we can with the contract tracing. New guidance, as Mr. Jess said, that we're getting guidance all the time. New guidance came out about health. And so, they've given us with that, I think it was 19 or 24 pages for health. You know, there's new guidance with that that tells us, you know, on a... where the bar would be set in terms of if a classroom is closed down or if a school is closed down. Once again, we would be taking that. We don't... as a district, we can't just make that decision. It's going to be provided to us by the Health Department. And so, we would continue to work very closely with that. The agenda in advance, we try to post that at least on the Monday, if not the Tuesday, before the Board meeting. The reason why sometimes is later is because of the fact that we're still working on it. Depending on the agenda, there are certain items on the agenda that we actually have to run by the attorney to make sure the wording is correct. And I personally apologize for the last Board meeting one. We were frantically putting that one together because of the fact that during that special meeting, we had to do things we haven't had to do before. So I was on the phone with the attorney up until the very end, and I got the agenda out to all the Board members, but I ran out of time and unable to put it online. So as soon as the Board meeting was over, I posted it. I did receive emails and messages from different parents in the community, which I responded to them and explained the situation. The AM and PM notification, like when will parents know whether their child is an AM student or a PM student? As I said before, there's so many different things that the whole team here in the district is working on. Part of that, day and night, is working on schedules for students and staff. It is an ever-moving target. So our goal is, by the end of tomorrow, to hopefully open up real-time parent portal. We will send out a notification if we're able to do that, if we're successful. It could be delayed up till Thursday because we, you know, it is a process where there's a lot of check and balance that goes into it. What causes us to go virtual? Once again, that would be... I'll go back to what the... if the governor orders us to go virtual or if from the Health Department, they give us guidance that we have to go virtual, those would be reasons why we would do that. Student belongings was another one. When will students be able to get their belongings? Each building is developing their own plan, and they'll be communicating that with the students. Students should expect probably within the first day or two of school that all those belongings will be returned to them. Preschool, I think we already answered that one. I wrote certified to the New Jersey DOE. I forget what that question was. So I can't answer that one right now, except for if it's, you know, did we get our plan certified? Yes, we did. The process is we send it, they receive it, they review it compared to their checklist, and then they report back to us if anything needs to change. We would make those changes, send it back. So our plan has been fully certified, and we've met everything on their checklist, even though the checklist came out after the plans were developed. Ed Reports for curriculum. I will reach out to Mrs. Stager. She will reach out to Mrs. Hutchinson to talk to her about what goes into those curricular decisions. Ed Reports is definitely one of them, but she'll talk more in detail with her. Additional state aid, I think you already answered, Derek. And I think that was... I think that was everything. I don't know if I missed anything. If I did, sorry. And if anyone on the Board thinks that I missed answering something, let me know.
Thanks, Dr. Tean. I would just ask you, after the meeting, just to go through the Google Doc where all the questions are. And, you know, if you see something that you missed, please reach out to the person who provided it so that we can get them their answer as well.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. All right. Now, be it resolved that the Board of Education move to recess into executive session to discuss negotiations and legal matters falling within the attorney-client privilege with respect to this subject. The minutes of the executive session, to the extent permitted by law, will be made available to the public once the issues are resolved. Subject's confidentiality requirements, action may be taken. May I have a motion, please? Thank you, Mr. Plantilla. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Any discussion on these? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved. We are in executive session at 8:19. The minutes of the executive session to the extent permitted by law will be made available to the public once the issues are resolved. Subject's confidentiality requirements, action may be taken. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Puntillum. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Any discussion on these? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? So moved. We are in executive session at 8:19. The minutes of the executive session to the extent permitted by law will be made available to the public once the issues are resolved. Subject's confidentiality requirements, action may be taken. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Puntillum. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Any discussion on these? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? So moved. We are in executive session at 8:19. The minutes of the executive session to the extent permitted by law will be made available to the public once the issues are resolved. Subject's confidentiality requirements, action may be taken. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Puntillum. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Any discussion on these? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? So moved. We are in executive session at 8:19. The minutes of the executive session to the extent permitted by law will be made available to the public once the issues are resolved. Subject's confidentiality requirements, action may be taken. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Puntillum. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Any discussion on these? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? So moved. We are in executive session at 8:19. The minutes of the executive session to the extent permitted by law will be made available to the public once the issues are resolved. Subject's confidentiality requirements, action may be taken. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Puntillum. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Any discussion on these? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? So moved. We are in executive session at 8:19. The minutes of the executive session to the extent permitted by law will be made available to the public once the issues are resolved. Subject's confidentiality requirements, action may be taken. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Puntillum. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Any discussion on these? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? So moved. We are in executive session at 8:19. The minutes of the executive session to the extent permitted by law will be made available to the public once the issues are resolved. Subject's confidentiality requirements, action may be taken. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Puntillum. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Any discussion on these? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? So moved. We are in executive session at 8:19. The minutes of the executive session to the extent permitted by law will be made available to the public once the issues are resolved. Subject's confidentiality requirements, action may be taken. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Puntillum. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Any discussion on these? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? So moved. We are in executive session at 8:19. The minutes of the executive session to the extent permitted by law will be made available to the public once the issues are resolved. Subject's confidentiality requirements, action may be taken. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Puntillum. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Any discussion on these? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? So moved. We are in executive session at 8:19. The minutes of the executive session to the extent permitted by law will be made available to the public once the issues are resolved. Subject's confidentiality requirements, action may be taken. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Puntillum. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Any discussion on these? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? So moved. We are in executive session at 8:19. The minutes of the executive session to the extent permitted by law will be made available to the public once the issues are resolved. Subject's confidentiality requirements, action may be taken. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Puntillum. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Any discussion on these? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? So moved. We are in executive session at 8:19. The minutes of the executive session to the extent permitted by law will be made available to the public once the issues are resolved. Subject's confidentiality requirements, action may be taken. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Puntillum. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Any discussion on these? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? So moved. We are in executive session at 8:19. The minutes of the executive session to the extent permitted by law will be made available to the public once the issues are resolved. Subject's confidentiality requirements, action may be taken. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Puntillum. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Any discussion on these? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? So moved. We are in executive session at 8:19. The minutes of the executive session to the extent permitted by law will be made available to the public once the issues are resolved. Subject's confidentiality requirements, action may be taken. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Puntillum. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Any discussion on these? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? So moved. We are in executive session at 8:19. The minutes of the executive session to the extent permitted by law will be made available to the public once the issues are resolved. Subject's confidentiality requirements, action may be taken. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Van Horn. All right, we got right on the money there. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Figure out the subject.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, so moved. So, before I ask for a motion to adjourn, I just want to touch on three things that I failed to mention earlier. There's been a lot of talk from various groups within the state about the all districts' abilities to run their HVAC, 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 what's late, systems effectively. And suggestions continuously talk about the types of filters that need to be in these machines. What people fail to realize is that the filters that they are recommending be placed in the machines will severely limit the amount of airflow into the educational spaces and in all the buildings. So the filters that not only Somerville, but all the other districts that I know are using are appropriate not only to contain particles that flow through the system, but also to ensure that there's proper airflow so that you feel the heat, you feel the coolness. So no matter what filters we use, we're not going to capture 100% of anything, but we just need to ensure that there's sufficient airflow for our students and our staff, or else, no matter what we do, they're going to have some kind of issue. And I would prefer for them not to have a breathing issue because of the fact that we've used a filter, which is not recommended for our machines, in addition to potentially causing damage to our machines, which could cost the districts hundreds of thousands of dollars to repair. That was the first one. The second item that I mentioned is that also there have been many discussions around the state about teachers utilizing form letters to bombard their districts with the fact that they cannot return to school or they will not return to school. The only thing that I would ask is, if you truly believe that your health and your welfare are going to be compromised by coming back, I would ask you to send that letter, and I would ask you to reach out to Dr. Tean and have that conversation. Because members of the board have heard that when staff members want to reach out to Dr. Tean, they're being told that he is going to be uncommunicative, combative. He is not going to listen to people. And I believe that is the furthest thing from the truth, especially because I've had some staff members come to me and say, hey, you know what? We went in and spoke with Dr. Tean about an accommodation we needed. He understood, he was open, he made the time, and he said he's going to work with us. When you hear that from a staff member, it really makes our job on the board one that is being fulfilled because we now have that bond with the staff member who is comfortable with going to administration and asking and confiding in them. So we would ask you to continue to do that, please, because that's going to make the situation that we're currently in better for everybody. And there being nothing else, I would ask for a motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Giel. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? So moved. We are adjourned at 8:45. Enjoy the rest of your summer, everyone, and please remain safe.